Now 5:30, welcome everybody in person here and also those of you viewing online to the Spooner Area School District Committee of the Hole Meeting for October. Jesse, would you please call the order?
President.
Here.
Here.
President.
President.
Before we move on, I'd like to hand the meeting over to Dr. Aslan briefly.
Thank you, Mr. Weis. So, I just want to take the opportunity to let everybody who's present tonight or watching online that this is school board week in Wisconsin. So, I want to take this opportunity on behalf of the employees of the district to thank each of our school board members for their service to our students, to our staff, to our families, to our community and our schools. Being a school board member is no easy job, particularly in this day and age. They devote a lot of time, they do a lot of study, they're called on to make challenging decisions. So, join me in a round of applause for our school board members, please.
Thank you, Dr. Aslan. Appreciate that. On behalf of the board, we appreciate that. Approval of the agenda, next thing on the agenda. Do I have a motion to approve?
Still moved.
In a second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those no, carries. Item two, presentation, student, staff and community recognition. Dr. Aslan? And we have a number of awards today. I will call forward Melissa Smith, Gavin Byer and Melissa Franson. And Deana Peterson. Melissa Smith, Melissa has gone above and beyond to help acclimate our long-term substitute in our CTE classes. She has spent extra time helping with lesson plans, billing procedures, materials, daily work, et cetera. She has done an excellent job of supporting and mentoring our substitutes have frequently commented how Mrs. Smith has made their days easier. I couldn't be more proud of how Melissa stepped up and provided this essential support to benefit our staff and students. Her leadership and dedication is outstanding. We are fortunate to have her at the Spooner Middle School, nominated by Josh Fiesel. Next up is Gavin Byer. Spooner Elementary would like to recognize a Spooner Middle School student, Gavin Byer, for his work on a project for our playgrounds. Gavin built us six benches for our playgrounds. We are able to have three at each location. He not only built us beautiful benches, but he also organized the business donation piece to pay for the materials. Obviously Gavin is a very hardworking and thoughtful young man. Your work on this project is very much appreciated by the students and the staff at Spooner Elementary School. Thank you very much, Gavin. Next up is Deanna Peterson. As the Administrative Assistant in Pupil Services, Ms. Peterson has been the driving force for pupil services, going above and beyond getting the school year started with a new director, new psychologist, and a large number of new students to organize and obtain records on. She is incredibly helpful to anyone with questions and has a sage's understanding of special education practice, policy and law in Wisconsin. Spooner is lucky to have such a dedicated and knowledgeable person working on pupil services, nominated by Mr. Radke. And finally, Melissa Franson. Here's her thing, and I'll read this about Melissa. Melissa has taken on many new roles this year in support of Spooner High School. She accepted a spot on the leadership team helping shape the climate, culture and educational direction of the building. Additionally, she has taken an active role in online coursework where she is offering a pre-calculus course to students in another school districts through CISA-10's Distance Learning. Melissa's dedication and passion are a great credit to herself, the high school and the Spooner Area School District, nominated by Mr. Schrader. Thanks to all those award winners for their dedication to our school district. We appreciate it. Next on the agenda, reports of threats at school. Okay, recently we've had a few of these happen, and I guess we'd, I'd just like to know, maybe from the principals, what happens when this occurs and how do, how do students make known a threat? And what's your, been your experience so far with this? Can we have a little insight into that?
Usually for inexperienced in high school, since I'm up here first, since I've had the most recently, it's been a student just reporting it to us, whether it's showing something on the phone or get an email from a parent who had a student actually report to them. It's been nice that we have students that have that faith in the adults that are on them, that they're willing to come forward and actually report things like that. Two of our cases have been totally unsubstantiated as far as what happened and what was heard. Our last case was a little bit more distressful.
I think we need to commend the students that have brought these threats forward. That's always important, and I want to, you know, encourage that behavior from kids to keep their eyes and ears open and let a responsible adult know if something like that occurs. Mr. Berghammer, have you had any experience with that?
Well, mostly in our building, we've had in my short time, we've had incidences, whether they're health-related, certain smaller emergencies. So, if something was to happen like that, we just take a look at the scenario, depending on where that, that fell into as far as which emergency response or emergency alert we would use, then we just go with that route. So, you know, you could do a hold because a student had gotten sick in the hall, something like that. There's certain things that happen. And if there's an alert that happens in our building and very consistent with the other buildings, then usually communication goes home to, goes out to our community or out to our families that are directly related to that building. So, thank goodness, we haven't had a whole lot of issues in our building so far. But like I said, we usually take a look at the circumstances and then decide, hey, where does this fall as far as an emergency alert goes, or does it even fall into that category? And if not, we just make decisions based on it. And if there's an alert given, then there's communication that goes home.
And the parents, I guess, receive all this through Parents Square, the notifications of a...
This year they would. In the past, it's been through Skyward, and before that was Remind or different other scenarios.
Okay. Thanks. Mr. Fiesel, do you have any thing going on in the middle school you want to talk about?
I would just kind of second some of what's been said. So, you know, I think thankful that, I think the culture within the buildings is that students feel safe, they feel in a good spot, that either them or their parents bring forward information. I think we can't discredit that, that it's stressful and anxiety creating every time one comes in, there's no doubt. But I think we also have to pay great respect and thank you to the kids and the parents that bring it forward. I think that speaks a lot about some of the comfort and safety protocols that are in place. And you know, if we get, if we get a comment or something like that, you know, right away, the, the first priority is just to ensure the safety of everybody, students, staff, anybody that might be involved, you know, and then we start the process of beginning to, you know, acquire more information, you know, what, what was going on, where did this happen, who might have been around, making sure we have a good, safe and secure place. We start talking to parents of students who might be involved along with our local law enforcement. It's one of those that they're quick to respond and jump into the process with us. You know, and it's just kind of a fact-finding, you know, time too. You know, we're trying to gather as much information as we can. We rely on law enforcement to make, help us make decisions as to some of those next moves. And then we want to communicate out, you know, what was reported, steps that were taken, outcomes that might have been experienced. Still, while protecting, you know, the dignity of all that's involved and making sure people feel comfortable to bring those threats forward. You know, we got a lot of things that we try to do, I think, in all three buildings every day. I think the other principals would agree that making sure students and staff get home in the same way they came to us is priority number one, and then we go from there. So, it's unfortunate that we've had, you know, a couple of them in my time at the middle school and whatnot. But we try to respond and make the best decisions we can as a team with law enforcement, administration, and, you know, and then we debrief and try to learn from there. So, that's just a little bit of insight into, I think, some of that process.
Anybody on the board have questions for the, these principals? Yes.
So, I was just, just thinking again after Mr. Fiesel is done, you know, I think that it's super important, as we know, communication is super important to the community and the families, but that's not our first job, right? We have to make sure that we are following protocols, we're taking care of business. The last thing we want to do is communicate something out without knowing all the facts. And so, we have to make sure we have all the information, our kids are safe, our staff are safe, all of the other things, Washburn County, Spooner PD, whoever does fire department, everybody else is all in line, everybody's communicated to. Dr. Aslan's communicated to other business or other buildings. And then when all the information is gathered, we have all the facts, then it's time to start communication home. So, I just think that was one thing I wanted to make sure I had to do.
I just really want to say thank you to the Spooner Police Department. They have done a phenomenal job working with us, and I can't say enough about the time that they've spent and the energy they've put into helping us investigate these things. So, that's, that's all I've got.
Dr. Aslan, yes?
So, I too want to applaud all the students that just have the courage to come forward and report something like that. That's, that's not an easy thing to do, and I must tell you, it doesn't happen in all school districts. So, we're really fortunate to have such commitment from our, our students to keeping our school environment safe, respectful and positive for everybody. I want to echo the thanks for the law enforcement support that we've gotten in cases such as this, and it's the Spooner Police Department, the Washburn County Sheriff's Department, even the State Patrol has responded. And that partnership is key to keeping everybody safe. And I just want parents and families and community members to know there is a process. There's an analysis process that takes place involving school district personnel and law enforcement personnel. But rest assured that every one of these matters that comes forward is taken as serious, that until such a concern can be disproven, it's taken as, as truth. Because, you know, as Mr. Fiesel said, we want our students and our staff to go home in the same or better condition that they came to us in the morning. So, there is no higher priority in our district than keeping our students and our staff members safe.
Thank you. Does anybody having the, on the board have any questions?
Well, I just want to say one thing. I just want to say that, you know, thank you to our staff. It's obvious that our students feel comfortable enough coming forward. So, the staff administration, we can't thank you enough because students feel comfortable coming with these, these issues. I do have a question about communication. Communication is very important. I do want to remind all parents that you need to have our guardians, I should say. It's important that you have your information updated with the office. So, you do get the communication. So, if you are a guardian, I can't stress enough to make sure that they have the right phone number, email for anybody, so that you do get communication. That's very, very important. But I do have a question regarding communication. Cellphone use in classes, like is that determined by building? Because I think that there's a lot of students that are, have access to their cellphones during class, and especially during these whole things. So, I think information gets miscommunicated. And so, I'm a little concerned about that.
Can we, can anybody you address that for us?
So, during this, during this last event that we had this summer, I re-recorded all our alert messages. And unfortunately, the script I was giving was from an old set of things. So, when I went to secure classrooms, the voice went over lockout, and the next best, the next closest thing on our list was locked down.
Sure.
And that is, says to a teacher, in my mind, I'm blocking the doors, I'm turning off the lights, I'm doing everything to protect my class members. And we had, all I know of one classroom for sure that went into that mode, they were to the point where they're taking the screen off the window, getting ready to go. At that point in time, we're not too worried about whether or not they have a cellphone out and contacting parents at that point in time. So, it's, it was a totally different kind of situation. Kids can have their cellphones, they just can't have them out during class time. This was a situation where a teacher made a call that said, this is an emergency situation. You can, you can let them, let them do it. I, I have, we talked about it afterwards about the cellphone use, and I, I encouraged them to curb it because not only can it flood and get misinformation, but it could also flood 911 when we need to actually get things. So, it's something that we discussed, not very much a learning experience, even though this was a real situation. We learned from it like a drill, just like everything else. It's not something we do every day, and thank God I don't have to do it every day.
Okay.
Ms. Daniel, go ahead.
Yeah, no, I was glad that this was put on the agenda. I actually requested it partly because the community is, I don't know if many of you got contacts or people asking you, but getting a lot of fielding questions and emails. And I thought it was good that the public knows that a lot of this stuff we've been working on intentionally for four or five years. And so, some of the things that I want the public to realize is we've done a lot for our safety, and, and just echoing what the principal said, but we have looked at everything from our entrances to our, to how we lock the schools to communicate, we've talked about communication. I think that always needs to be ongoing. We've done things with glass, we've redone some of our security cameras, we've worked hard in collaboration with Spooner PD, Washburn PD, State Patrol. We've even had some trainings for staff in all of our law enforcement, EMTs, hospital. We've done a lot to intentionally work on these things. And I think it's, the public isn't aware sometimes of all the things that we've done in the last two, three years, and, and actually have had a safety team or, I think it was a team. And so, one thing though, I would maybe suggest is at one time we had a quarterly, I don't know if it's quarterly, but we used to have a meeting with Spooner PD, somebody from Washburn PD, the safety coordinator, which is Mr. Berghammer, right? You oversee that admin. I think maybe just as a suggestion or a thought is that because these things are ongoing and they change and they morph and they, I would encourage and with some board members that maybe we get back to that, maybe we get back to some of those in collaboration, debriefing. That just helps then all of those people when the community, we can let them know, you know, grandparents or just concerned citizens. And just to be looking always creatively, how do we continue to fortify, strengthen, if we can, to make sure that this stays at the forefront always? I think that's just the age, unfortunately, that we're in. So, just a thought, but I wanted the public to know that we have done, the school has done, the staff has done, a tremendous amount of stuff to work hard on our safety, including the buildings and different aspects of that, even Mr. Miller. And, and there's so many people that have been a part of that. So, I just wanted the public to be aware, there's been a lot that has helped in this process. But one suggestion would maybe back to those quarterly, or I don't know what they were, to be honest, the quarterly or couple a year that we had. And I thought those were very beneficial. Yep. Thank you.
Anybody else? Terry?
Yeah, I do have a question, and somewhat maybe it's jumping the gun to the next agenda item, but, so, and I know confidentiality is a thing when it comes to like behavior or mental health issues, but do those kids that, not the kids that come forward, so we do really appreciate those, but the kids that were potentially saying and making threats, if they were founded, are they getting extra mental health counseling or given to the counselor or sought out by counselors within the district? And then the, the other side. So, if they're not, I know, I do realize kids do say some things that are just off the cuff.
Yeah, so, excellent question, and, and there's a lot of things at play here. So, as you said, confidentiality wise, a lot of times I, in my experience, parents get really frustrated with these situations because they don't find out the outcomes. And that's because we have two federal laws that prohibit us from doing that, FERPA and IDA, if that applies. What we always try to do is very thoroughly understand the root cause of these situations. And I think the principals have done a fabulous job of that from the feedback I've seen and the products I've seen from it. When it hits a certain level, the county jumps in and they get a whole lot of attention because obviously that's a huge safety risk. There's a lot of attention given to this. It's hard to speak to specific situations, but it's, it is absolutely taken very seriously.
That's what I figured.
Anyone else? If not, okay, we'll, we'll be interested to find out what happens in the future on this. Hopefully, this stops. On a lighter note, before we move on, I'd like to congratulate the girls golf team, the girls volleyball team, the cross-country team, the boys soccer team, and of course, our football team for winning their homecoming game on Friday. Let's give all those sports a big... Moving on, agenda item 2C, Spooner, Spooner High School-based mental health services expansion. Mrs. Myers.
Okay. I just wanted to connect with each of you. Last February, Washburn County Health and Human Services partnered with Spooner Area School District to begin school-based mental health services with a pilot site being at Spooner Middle School. And they're using grant, we received the part of this huge mental health grant that they are going to use to fund this for up to five years. And so, they have, it has worked very well at the middle school so far. And so, they have the capacity to expand it now to the high school building. And so, what we are looking for, it would be, would be one day a week. We're thinking 10 students, five, maybe bi-weekly. Kind of, again, will depend on, on the amount of service that will be required for that. They do have a plan, the grant will go for five years, but they do have a plan to continue that funding, you know, through, through them in the future. We still, we already have, and, and part of, you know, if, say, when a situation happens or we're concerned about a, a student, we would absolutely call the family and talk to them about whatever the concern would be. And we have a really nice list of area mental health providers that we give to families to, you know, say, give them a call based on insurance and all these different things. And we have MOUs with several of the different agencies in town here. And that won't change. We will continue to work with the different agencies, you know, and they'll, they see their own clients, you know, with those families through the MOU. This would be a separate MOU essentially. So, really how it would work is if myself or another staff member, even a family member says, you know, they're really having trouble, and that's, I think the access for counseling is very difficult in our area. There's a shortage. We, and then of course, the timing, it's really hard, families to, you would have to leave work, come, pick up your child, take them to any of the other agencies at 2:00, wait around for their appointment, you know, so it's just, we have a real access issue. So, allowing for this to be done during the school day just is such a blessing to all the families. So, we would make that referral, contact the family, they would, if they are interested, they would fill out a release of information. We, I would then connect that student's information with, there's a case manager that works with Northwest Passage. I didn't say that. This is all done with Northwest Passage. And so, the clinician there would then reach out to the family and begin to establish that relationship. Once the consent and everything was done, I would then introduce the student to the clinician and help them coordinate, you know, what would be the best time to meet during the school day, and we would go from there. That's really what all that says. And then it would go for as long as, you know, whatever they, you know, therapists are great about setting goals, you know, okay, we're going to work on this, this and this. And so, termination of services would end when they felt that they've met their goals, or, you know, the student or parent has decided to not continue. We would create, we would just expand the current memorandum of understanding with Northwest Passage to include Spooner High School then as well. And then if this approves, they are ready to get going right away for us in November. Any questions for me?
Any questions?
Yes.
Yes. Besides Northwest Passage, who do we have MOUs with, with the different agencies? Can you give me a complete?
I can. I know for sure, each therapist at each organization has to provide their information, their license and insurance and all of that. So, we have some from SOAR in Shell Lake, Aurora in Anchor Bay. We can share that.
All right. So, I just could ask the district office for MOUs as far as the school-based mental health services?
We'll, we'll make sure that all the board members get the list.
Oh, I appreciate it. It's just good to know.
Yeah.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
Anybody else?
All of this would just take place during the school day, you're saying?
Yes.
Or the school time?
Yep. So, whatever day they could come.
Right on sight.
Yep.
And it was used in the middle school this past year successfully, in your opinion? Good, good deal? All right. And it won't cost us anymore, will it? That's even better.
No, this is a really great opportunity, especially that they come to the students because with the, are some students and the economic makeup that we have, some students, they don't have access to get the programs like this. So, I think this is a really great idea, great opportunity. Thank you.
Any further questions? If not, do I have a consensus to move this to the board meeting later in the month?
Yes.
Yes. Very good. Thank you, Ms. Myers. Uh, next on the agenda, item G. Correction, item H, I'm sorry.
We had D?
D.
Or D, where are we here? Yeah, I had too much writing on this agenda. Item D, discuss library media plan 2024 to 2027. Mrs. Fiesel and Mr. Miller.
Okay, just briefly here while the projector warms up. Library media plan is something that is required as part of state statute and DPI guidelines, something we bring to you periodically every few years as part of an updated, ongoing process. And I'm happy to say that we're back here with an update for you based on what DPI has put out for guidelines to move forward. Mrs. Fiesel has led that process, working with our administrators and stakeholders throughout the school to come up with a media plan that... to come up with a media plan that will meet DPI's long-range library planning goals and keep us in compliance for funding and other things that are part of the library media process. So at this point, I'd like to just turn this over to Callie and let her walk you through what that plan looks like.
All right. So as Mr. Miller mentioned, this is part of our Wisconsin administrative code that with the school board, we have on file a written long-range plan for our library services in order to maintain some very important funding for our district. So here you can see the amount of funding we received in the past few years from those common school funds. So you can see as the last few years have gone, we've seen an increase in the amount of funding we've received through common school funds, which we know is not typical of funding for education right now. So again, really important for us to continue to receive these funds. Based on our initial estimate from the DPI, we're looking at receiving approximately $76,000 again this school year. The exact dollar amounts come out to us in January, but they usually give us an estimate. So right now, that estimate is down just a touch from last year, but it's still a substantial amount of money. So again, really important for us to have this plan approved and on file with the DPI. So the DPI uses the Future Ready Librarian Framework as kind of our guiding document for our library media areas. So from that framework, we focused on three areas that we identified and developed our goals around. So focusing on curriculum instruction and assessment, so how the library media centers in each of the buildings can support what's happening in each of our classrooms and supporting our teachers and students in those ways. Looking at maintaining a robust infrastructure. So how are we providing technology to meet the needs of our students? And then looking at that budget and resources that were given from the common school funds, how are we investing those strategically to best support our students' needs? So our first focus area was on curriculum instruction and assessment. So our goal is that by the end of this plan, so the 26, 27 school year, the library media program will continue to curate and integrate a robust collection of digital resources and tools to support our students through creativity and collaboration, also including training for our teaching staff on how to effectively use those resources in their instructional areas. So that would be our first goal. Second goal was looking at maintaining that robust infrastructure, so working together with the technology department and really focusing on that equitable digital access for our students. So making sure that all of our students have access to digital resources and also appropriate digital tools and up-to-date devices for all students in 4K through 12th grade throughout the district. And then our last goal, looking at those common school funds that we are provided. So by the end of that 26, 27 school year, looking to decrease the average age of our library collections, so continuing to bring those collections up to date and keeping them current by at least three years. So you can see from the chart, the year, the average age of our collections in each of those buildings, so looking to keep that updated. And then focusing on meeting the ALA, American Library Association, recommendations of 15 to 20 bucks available per child for collection development and management. So you can see in each of the buildings, we would actually look to weed out or decrease a little bit in the elementary school. Right now, we're, we have a lot available. And then increasing some of our availability and numbers in the middle school and the high school. So, questions that you have regarding those goals moving forward?
Anybody have a question? Where, where do you get your books from? What book, book fairs or what companies are you ordering library materials from normally?
Most of our library materials are ordered through Follett, which is a company that works primarily with schools in particular. So that would be where the bulk of our materials are purchased from.
Is there any competition between book fairs or book distributors on trying to get an account for various schools? I mean, is there a competition with that where we can bid on different sources?
Vendors here, going back for the past few years, but we have stayed with Follett. It's Follett Title Wave is the actual name of the vendor, partly because of the system they use for tracking materials and the wide range of materials they have. It's also one that is predominantly used at least in the northern part of the state.
Okay.
There's a question.
Here.
I was just going to gain clarity on what the robust infrastructure is and the media technologies or on personal devices. So obviously, we have Chromebooks and personally assigned to students. I can't remember what grade that goes down to, but I was curious if, like, we actually have computer labs anymore and if that's included? Or are they a thing of the past? I feel like they could be a thing of the past, I guess I'm thinking.
No, they are and they aren't.
Okay.
In our elementary school, we have one computer lab that is not tied in any way to any funding that we're talking about here. That lab is used predominantly for bringing in kids or part of our win group process. Or Camry can speak to more, but also we have times when younger kids that are not using Chromebooks go in there to use those devices depending on what they're doing for the assessments, could be other learning activities. Middle school, we do not have any set computer labs. We have devices, other technologies, classroom STEM programs. Mr. Feasel could speak to. In the high school, we do maintain two computer labs right now. One is in the tech ed area, in the business ed area. And then with all from grades one through 12, having an individual device for them. They utilize those for just classroom projects and that. And, yeah, I can speak to this, or I'm sorry, Mrs. Feasel can speak to this too, is that part of that robust infrastructure is providing stuff you don't see in a normal classroom that allow staff or students either create materials or find information. It's nice to have a brand new Chromebook sitting with you, but it doesn't do any good if you don't have any resources with it. So there, you say robust infrastructure, it's a combination of online resources available for learning, using the Chromebooks, and a combination of devices themselves. We buy our Chromebook devices partly out of a district technology budget and partly through funding for this because it's an eligible common school fund item. We supplement that with other online resources and print resources.
And I think one of the important pieces that especially this plan and that framework focuses on is that equitable access. So our school devices are the same for all students, so appropriate for their grade level, right? So depending on the grade level that our students are in, all students have the same device. So we're not seeing any sort of gap or inequity of devices that are available for students to use. Yeah. So along with that, we have some online resources that we provide for students. So again, thinking about some of that creativity, collaboration pieces. So one of the programs we support is WeVideo. So it's a video creation platform that students use in a variety of classes. So they would be able to create content. You've probably seen some of the things that students have created, especially in the middle school and the high school, to promote things that are going on within the building or the district. So that's part of this. We have some VR goggles that will be going out, that we're rolling out yet this year. That was a new addition. So students will have some access to some virtual reality. So things that they can experience that are outside our walls that students might never actually have the opportunity, but like, social studies uses those a lot to provide students opportunities to see different parts of the world, experience other cultural things that we can't get here in Spooner. We have some online access to eBooks and audiobooks for students, just to provide them another opportunity. And those are all divided out by grade level and building, so they're appropriate for the age of our students. Playaway devices are another audiobook type option that we have available for our students, so they can listen to the audio if that's their preference, or if, for whatever reason, that's an easier way for them to listen to a book and take that in. So just providing a lot of options and opportunities for our students to experience things in those ways.
Anything else? If not, thank you for the information. Oh, we have someone in the public here.
Hi, Leon Rosenberg, and I'm a parent. What would be the best way that we as parents could have access to like book titles? And like what schools, certain books are available in?
So each of our buildings maintains an online record. We have an online card catalog of all of our materials.
Is that available on the school website, the school district website?
You, we, you could.
It's not available on the website.
You could contact me and I could get you the information.
So I could get one for each school?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else? If not, thank you for the information. Do I have consensus to move this to the regular board meeting?
Yes.
Yes.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item E, District Third Friday Count Report. Dr. Haslam?
So the Third Friday Count Report is one of the two pupil counts that the Department of Public Instruction requires school districts to hold during the course of the year. You have two documents and board docs. The first is the formula on how we arrived at the figure for the Third Friday in September count. And as you see with that, our count is 1,186 students. So actually a small increase from last year. The second document is more of a comparison document. And in that, you'll see enrollment by grade, and you'll also see that longitudinally over time. So I do want to give a shout out to Mrs. Robati because she's the one that has to put all this information together. So thank you, Mrs. Robati.
Any questions on this? Hearing none. Do I have consensus to, well, actually, we'll take this information and place it on file. That's what we'll do with that. Thank you. Next item on the agenda. Item F, discuss the creation of People Services Student Evaluation Specialist. Mr. Adkey.
I think I gotta pull it up here quick, sorry. Mr. Miller, was it on this? Oh, right. Look at the tabs. All right. So I'm here tonight to talk about the current staffing in People Services and what we've been able to do so far this year. So as you're aware, we had our psychologist resign late summer, and that resulted in a pretty major gap in the department until we were able to fill it with a licensed psychologist. During this time, we got a large number of referrals from various entities for, to evaluate students for various services. And even without a psychologist, none of those timelines stopped. We're committed to a 60-day timeline to evaluate students and find them eligible or not eligible for services. This created a tremendous workload, especially before we had a psychologist. We got a contract psychologist in, and then we finally got our .4 position psychologist, which was fantastic to get. This is also an issue in the area where finding a full-time psychologist is a massive challenge. And I'm just very thankful we were able to find that person. However, because we were only able to get our hands on a .4 psychologist, there's still a lot of work being covered by a variety of people. Special education teachers, case managers, special education case managers, speech language pathologists, myself, Ms. Peterson have been covering a lot of the paperwork role in that and doing some research around the area. We, sorry, that's the next slide here. We, what did, some other districts had done in this situation is hire a limited-term administrative assistant to help with that paperwork load to kind of make up for some of that position that wasn't completely filled. And it is, created quite a large strain on a number of people, particularly at the elementary. There was a large number of referrals. So I'm coming to you, the board, asking for an additional .3 FTE, limited term, for the 24, 25 school year evaluations. I'm calling it an evaluation specialist to work with the director, administrative specialist, and the psychologist to assist with monitoring evaluation timelines, gathering reports, and evaluation paperwork, assisting with scheduling, evaluation reviews, and assist with legal compliance. We're looking at around a $20 an hour starting rate. With it being less than 30 hours a week, there'd be no benefit. So we're looking at roughly about 12 hours a week for the position. As I said before, the other districts in the area have done similar things in this situation. And we would be funding this position through funds allocated to a full-time psychologist position. Any questions?
What would they need to qualify for this position?
So a willingness to learn. It's great if they have some experience in schools and special education to come and support the evaluation process. There's no degree requirements or anything. A lot of these skills can be learned on the job and, but it's great if you have somebody who's very organized and very disciplined with timelines and schedules.
Are you aware of any school districts in the vicinity that have one, a part-time one now that we could share with? Somebody that's already qualified, that may be only a part-time position in a particular district could be a part-time one here too, which would be more.
Yeah, that's a really good question. I am aware of one that did it, but he, he was a retired teacher and he just was done. And it's an amazing thing if you get somebody who's, you know, retired or whatever, and they're willing to do it for a little while. That's a fantastic service to the community. Because it does require some knowledge, but if you're organized and willing and really good with schedules, it's definitely something you can teach too.
Anybody else?
I mean, I'm great with trying to hire some help. I just had 20 bucks an hour only working 12 hours a week. I don't know how you're going to find somebody, but we can try.
And of course, we're trying to be financially responsible too, and make sure, because bringing in that, having a contract psychologist come in and help too, that was a pretty big commitment financially too, so.
Anybody else? Okay, thank you for the information, Mr. Adkey. Do I have consensus to move this to the board meeting in the end of the month?
Yes.
Yes.
Very good.
Thank you.
Item G now, discuss early college credit program and Start College Now requests. Mrs. Myers.
As you'll remember, the early college credit and Start College Now laws require students to fill the application out before October 1st for spring college classes. So what you have before you in your board docs are the students who have completed the documents for courses to take this spring. We will register for those courses in January. And because the Wisconsin State deadline is so early, the October 1st, the colleges don't have their schedules out yet. And so it's sort of a guess. And so I generally have them pick one or two classes, sometimes even three, even though they might only be taking one. So you can see, some students, you can see they're only going. some students, you can see they're only going to take, you know, the one course. But even the other ones may only be taking one or two. We're just kind of guessing on what they might. Any questions?
Questions? And you can confirm, none of these are offered in the high school here? None of these courses?
Yep.
Okay.
Or, you know, we teach US government. Some students might be taking Intro to American Government, but they've already taken US government here. So they're taking.
But these are different classes that they can get.
Absolutely. Right, this is a college-level course. Yes.
Anybody else? Thank you. Do I have consensus to move this to the board meeting later in the month?
Yes.
Yes.
Very good. Item H. Discuss volume thirty-three, number two Neola policy updates, group one. I have been asked to, um, remove one of these policies for further editing because apparently it, we, uh, it clashes with what we're doing right now. And it needs to be reworked a little bit. That'd be number fifty-four sixty, which is, uh, graduation requirements. Would you like to comment on that at all, Dr. Aslan?
Just, uh, that we already have that as, as part of our, uh, curriculum in the high school, part of the scope and sequence. So we just want to have the opportunity to do some editing on that draft policy so that what we're bringing you is com- completely reflective of both what we're doing and fulfills the state requirement.
Okay, and this, this will be included then in future updates that we vote on in future meetings?
Yes.
Other than that, does anybody have any questions on the policy updates?
I was trying to find it here earlier. Um, I want to know if it's, we had made some changes already with like our food, um, requirements where it's said like recommended that, um, when, say like there's snacks in the classroom and stuff. And I'm wondering if this one is reflecting that or not.
Which one are you referring to?
Well, I'm trying to find the number right now.
Yeah, that was the wellness policy that we made some changes to.
Correct.
Recently.
Eighty-five, ten.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, so I'm just wondering if this reflects that, those changes that we had made or not, but.
Yes.
Yes, it does. Okay.
Okay, any other questions?
Um, just the last policy. It's there, but it's all crossed out. So.
Six forty?
So I'm just wondering. Yeah, eighty-six forty. Are we just not having that policy or is it? I, I just was curious.
Well, it says in the comments, the content's been moved to policy twenty-three forty. So maybe it's.
Well, maybe I should read better. Thank you.
Any further questions? If not, do I have consensus to move this to the board meeting at the end of the month?
Yes.
Very good. Item I, thirty-sixty-ninety-day planning. Everybody had a chance to review that? Any questions? Hearing none. We'll replay, we'll receive that information and place it on file. Item J, financial update. Dr. Aslan?
For the month of August twenty-twenty-four, uh, income of seven million, three hundred and thirty-one thousand, one hundred and fifty-nine dollars and one cent. Uh, that comes almost exclusively on, uh, the collection of property taxes, the second half of property taxes for the school year. Expenditures, one million, one hundred and twenty-nine thousand, one hundred and ninety-five dollars and twenty cents. Balance at the end of August, eleven million, forty-five thousand, five hundred and eighty-three dollars, seventy-seven cents. And, uh, this is kind of the end of the period where we have cash on hand and we know, as we've heard from Mrs. Vasquez, that we will have a significant drawdown on that for the last part of twenty-twenty-four. Uh, just a quick comparison to the month of August in twenty-twenty-three, balance on hand at the end of the month was eight million, four hundred and sixty thousand, fifty-six dollars and fifty-six cents.
Any questions? Hearing none. We'll receive that information and place it on file. Item K, approval of vouchers. Where you want to get a chance to review those? Any questions on any of those? Hearing none. Do I have consensus to move that to our regular board meeting at the end of the month?
Yes.
Yes.
Very good. At this time, we will convene into closed session. Pursuant to Wisconsin statutes nineteen-eighty-five, consider the employment promotion compensation or performance evaluation data of any public employee or which the governmental bodies jurisdiction or exercise responsibility. Also to consider financial, medical, social, personal histories or disciplinary data of specific persons applies which have discussed and probably would likely have a substantial adverse effect upon the reputation of any person referred to in such histories or data or involved in such problems or investigations. Thank you.
Need a motion?
Yes. We have a motion to go into closed session. We have a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of closed session, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. We're in.
We reconvene.
We reconvene in open session?
At seven thirty-three PM. The motion was by Megan, second by Nathaniel, to accept the resignation of Superintendent Dr. Aslan at the completion of his contract of June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-five. Motion, hearied.
Thank you very much. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Don't move.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. We are adjourned. Thank you very much for your time tonight.